Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Joshau.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our February 19 City Council regular meeting. Has everybody reviewed or are there any comments, changes to it?
Good.
If I, seeing none, I would entertain a resolution for...
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve the minutes from our February 19 regular City Council meeting.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is the Council acting as liquor licensing authority and a presentation and possible action on renewal of a tavern license for the Grantham Beverage Company doing business as Queen's Lounge at 112 West Kiowa with a previous state violation. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, most liquor license renewals are handled administratively by my office, except when there's a violation. The Queen was one of several that were involved in violations quite some time ago, just because of how the timing of their renewal went. This actually happened in December of 2017, and by the time they were renewing last time, about a year ago from this time, it hadn't worked its way through the State Liquor Enforcement Division and been resolved. Now that has happened, so we're bringing this before the Council now for this renewal. During a compliance check in December 2017, the establishment permitted the selling, serving, giving or procuring of an alcohol beverage to an 18-year-old underage purchaser, and also the establishment's employee slash agent failed to verify that the consumer was at least 21 years of age. So basically, it was an underage sale and a failure to check ID. The owners of the Grantham Beverage met with the State Liquor Enforcement Division and reached a stipulation and agreement that involved a 10-day suspension of the liquor license, five days held in abeyance pending no further violations, and a fine of $525 paid in lieu of the act of suspension for the other five days. There are no other known violations in this licensee's file. The manager, the owners, both, I believe, are here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. The police department's reviewed the renewal application and inspected the premises and found no violations, and the city attorney's office has also reviewed the application and found it in order. So we're asking the Council to decide in the best interest of the city whether to approve the application for renewal of the tavern liquor license for Grantham Beverage, Inc., EBA Queen Lounge at 112 West Kiowa Avenue.
Okay. You want to come up here and we'll... So I know the license, the violation occurred quite a while back, or you've had a renewal since then, I believe.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, I'm not, I don't have the paperwork right in front of me, and I should, but we might be even past the one-year probation period that the liquor inspector put on us from when we signed our agreement that we, I guess, essentially pled guilty to the infraction.
Yeah, you have. What have you done regarding education?
All of our bartenders are tip-certified now. We make them require that. That's kind of like the fallback agency, the education of over-serving and checking of IDs and fraudulent IDs. We continue to have a door guy on Friday and Saturday nights. Unfortunately, we don't, we never got to see the videotape of how, what exactly did happen. So, I mean, I think in the future, that'd be cool if you could actually see the tape so you'd know, hey, how did we fail, or where was the mistake made, so we can see how we even got in the building? Because we do have a door guy, so that's the question we still need to figure out. But we try to maintain a door presence all the time. We actually have two guys that are out of the Army that watch the door for us, so, I mean, we've taken steps to try to limit that.
Okay.
We also do monthly trainings with our staff, just to make sure that our communication is all in order, that everybody's on the same page, bring up any issues that anybody had, how we resolve those issues, and all in all, make sure that we're working together as a team to ensure the safety of the community and the safety of our establishment.
Okay. So it sounds like you've been pretty proactive on...
Yeah, we definitely, yeah, we're...
It doesn't do anyone any...
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Does anybody have any questions, or...
So I do have a question. So you're saying that you have a door person that is, that checks IDs? Do your bartenders still check IDs?
Absolutely.
Or do they assume that if they got in the door, that they are of age?
No. Our employees, if there's any question, ever, that's, it's, you know, better safe than sorry, is what we really push to our employees.
I guess the door guy does not get in trouble if we serve a minor. He is not punished. The bartender is still responsible for the...
Correct. Yeah, I just wondered, because, I mean...
Yeah, that's how that falls. It's still on the bartender is responsible to make sure. And we've read that if you don't know the person and yours not carded, we don't, we don't, you know, no one really gets upset about having to show their ID, so, yeah, but that's how that would have...
I mean, I think that's good, because that's basically a two-step process, then. So you have somebody that's checking when they're coming in, and then if the bartenders and the waitresses are, you know, doing the same thing.
Correct. On busy nights like Bob Stock or something like that, we'll actually put bracelets on everyone that comes in to help with that, so if they don't have a bracelet, then the bartender for sure knows that they have not been carded before they come in the door, and other procedures as well.
On busy nights like those as well, when there's people everywhere, we make sure that we're staffed efficiently enough so that we can keep an eye on the premises and run our business efficiently as well.
I'm sure it's crazy.
We have more eyes, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure on it.
We've experienced the chaos of Bob Stock.
Yeah, I mean, when you have that, that volume of people coming in, I'm assuming this was not tied in, that the timing wasn't with a major event, correct? Because I assume you guys got swept up in the...
It was, it was the holiday season, so we had holiday parties. Unfortunately, I think neither Amy or I were there at the time, but I think the bartender got sidetracked. She had just come on, and a miscommunication with the other bartender, and so when the kid said, "I'll take another Corona Light," she had assumed that the other bartender had served him, and so that's where she said she, that was her version of the story, I suppose, so, yeah, that's kind of how that happened.
And for the record, the employee that did commit the violation is no longer associated with our establishment or no longer an employee.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on a renewal of a tavern liquor license for Grantham Beverage Incorporated doing business at the Queen's Lounge at 112 West Kiowa Avenue.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
You have to stand there the whole night.
Next is presentation and discussion on the timeline and other issues related to a potential citizens initiative on the city complex project plan. Mr. Wells, Brennan, and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week at our work session, Council requested that we provide you with some information with regard to timelines and information about the overall process of the initiative, for an initiative. We understand, based upon what was said last week, that we should receive that paperwork by tomorrow. I think March 6 is what they said they were going to do, so we'll know a little bit better then of what, what that is, but I think what we have for you tonight is an explanation a little bit about that process and what those timelines are. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson to kind of do an overview of the information that he's pulled together for Council tonight, and then John will follow up some of the specific dates.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. There's a memo from me in your packet setting forth a timeline. The reservation of power is in Article 8, Section 21 of your charter. The signature requirement is 15% of the total number of registered municipal electors at the last regular election. These signatures have to be gathered in the 21 days before the petition is submitted to the clerk. The clerk then has 10 days to examine the petition and issue a certificate of sufficiency or insufficiency, after which time the circulators have the option of a cure under your charter, for which they may give written notice, and then they have an additional 10 days to add, to file a supplemental petition. Once the petition is determined to be adequate, Council has 30 days after the determination of sufficiency in which to consider the ordinance substantially as proposed in the petition. Council may adopt the ordinance as proposed, and in this respect, the initiative at the municipal level is an indirect initiative. The initiative does not go directly to the people. It goes to you all. If you adopt the ordinance, that's the end of it. If you do not adopt the ordinance, you set it for an election. That election is to be held not less than 30 days nor more than 90 days after the Council vote, except that there's a provision that if there's a regular election within 150 days, the initiative is considered at that time rather than as a special election. The proponents have the option of withdrawing their petition anytime up till the 15th day prior to the election. And Mr. Brennan has attached some dates to the, to all of this for the benefit of your likely proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I took Jeff's information that he pulled from the charter and based this on the assumption that they would be bringing this petition or initiative to us this Friday, March 8. So that's kind of our starting point for this timing. 21 days to gather signatures, they would have to be back by March 28. If they started immediately and did it, you know, they could do it, you know, wait a few days before they start, but they have, all the signatures have to be dated within 21 days of them turning in the petition. So I'm assuming they get right out there and do it in the first 21 days, so that'd be March 28. Then I have 10 days to verify those signatures, 846 of them, and certify the petition. That would be April 8. Then it gets a little muddy. They have two days to notify us. They want to amend it if it's declared insufficient, then 10 days to get more signatures or otherwise cure it, and then I have five more days to review it. So that's roughly going to take us to April 25, or if, if they object to my determining that it's insufficient, if I were to do that, they can ask for the Council to review that at its next meeting, which would be May 7. So once the petition is sufficient, the Council has 30 days to either adopt the ordinance without any changes or set it for an election. So from April 8, that would be between, we would have to set it between 30 and 90 days out. That would be between May 8 and August 8. So May 8 being the earliest date we could set an election, I would not set an election within 30 days. I am just not prepared to pull one off. We need at least 45 days for international, military, overseas voters, and there's a lot of complications, so I'd be more leaning towards the 90 days. But in any case, 150 days before the November election is June 5. And so what all of this is coming around to saying is that this is going to go on the November ballot. That's the only way I see it working out. I don't see a special election being held within that small window of May 8 and June 5, because I'm not going to rush an election when we're doing it all ourselves. And it's, you know, it's easier to coordinate with the county. That's why I don't know how to do it myself, because we always coordinate with the county.
And you said the 150 days was August?
What's that?
What was the 150 days from the election?
August 8.
June 5. November 5 is the election, so five months is 150 days, so June 5 is when, you know, the latest we could have an election without putting it on the November ballot. The August date was the 30 to 90 days, yeah.
90 days. Okay, okay.
Sorry, I should have written this out, but I just kind of calculated this this afternoon.
No, that's fine. I just knew there was an August date in there somewhere.
So that's basically the upshot, I think, is that it would, it would not be a special election. It would be on the November ballot in terms of timing, which is kind of critical to this, this issue, and...
And that's also fiscally responsible as well, because to do a special election is a financial burden to the taxpayers.
Right. And we're doing one in November anyway.
Correct.
It would just be one more question on a ballot where we're having council elections and already coordinating and participating in that election.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate all the information.
That answers that question. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Wilson, Brennan, or Wells? Well, I guess, could you refresh us again then as far as with the grant, to be able to get the architectural scheme and the engineering stuff and everything of complex or the city complex, whatever?
Yeah. So what we're looking at is generally 180 or 18 months from the date we sign the grant agreement. DOLA does give extensions, and we could go and ask for an extension based upon the need to look at some of these things, or if we want to modify what, what we're doing, we'd have to go back and ask them if we can modify the scope. The, so 180 days is essentially what we're doing. If we're going to wait through the end of November, what we're likely going to have to do is go back and rebid the project, because I don't think we're going to get anybody to hold their price for six or seven months on the, on the project at this point. So if we decide to wait until the initiative is determined till November, that's likely when we're going to be looking at it. And I think the overall timeframe for them to get this project done would be sometime finishing up around December, November, December, if we get things started right away, so...
I think the timeline for them, the architects, would be the biggest, that...
Yeah.
...hold back on them.
Yeah.
Or biggest hurdle.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Kevin took mine, so I'm good.
All right. Next item is a presentation, presentation on bids for replacement computers. Mr. Nelson. McCoy.
He's coming. I can hear his chair.
I can hear him moving around, too.
Welcome.
Looks like he appeared from nowhere.
We let him out of the cave every once in a while.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of Council. We have a long night ahead of us, so I will keep this brief. We went out for bid for 45, or 47 computers, and we are asking for 65. The prices that came back on the systems were way better than we had expected, and, you know, usually that would raise some red flags, so I went ahead and asked for references. The gentleman from Ace Computer was able to provide us with references. I called almost all of those references of the five I was able to speak with. The reviews and feedback has been genuinely glowing. They seem to be pretty big in military. We had two Air Force bases, a few school districts, justice centers, things like that, so the reviews seem to be pretty good, so we'd like to maybe get more than we initially went out for. Windows 7 support is ending in 2020, so we'd like to get all of the Windows 7 machines off of our domain as quickly as possible. We'll still have some stragglers, but they'll get dealt with accordingly, so, any questions?
If you're happy, we're happy, Nelson, so...
Okay. Yeah, they look great.
So bitspeeds, who you've used in the last couple of...
Yeah, and this isn't to slight them, they've been great.
Right.
They've been very, very great. Their, their support has been top-notch, but just can't ignore this price.
So do these computers match your bid specs?
They do, they do, and they come with the added bonus of having an extra, having a slot for a 5.5-inch drive, so we can take CD-ROM drives out of the old machines if people need them. We're trying to wean people off of CD-ROM drives, though, so, yeah, they're optical media.
My little daddy juice.
So this'll help. I mean, the people that really need them, we can just pull them out of the old machines and slap them in the new machines and call it a day. We did a survey, I think back in November, of all the users on our network, and most people don't use CD-ROM drives anymore, so...
Okay. So where does that put you on your replacement by getting the additional ones?
We'll be able to do maybe some of the out-of-band replacements, like the library. We were going to do that next year, but we'll just do it this year. Those are Linux systems, so they don't need to be replaced immediately, but, and then maybe some of the Windows 7 systems that weren't going to get replaced this year, we'll go ahead and kick them out, or take some of the Windows 10 machines and move them down. It's, it's all a shell game.
A shell movement.
Any other questions for Mr. McCoy? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution, accepting the bid from...
Ace Computers.
Yeah, I lost it. From Ace Computers in the amount of $43,401.80.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Al, or Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call. Sorry, Clint.
It is confusing.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, well, before I crawl back into my hole there, I wanted to, we have a presentation up next for Pat Fitz, and I wanted to just publicly thank Brent Nation and Steve Gleymer, Steve for his guidance, and Brent for his money. We couldn't have a GIS technician without, without either one of them. Steve has been wonderful in showing us what we need to do and teaching us about this, some of the basic concepts. Pat has stepped in and done an amazing job with a position that really didn't exist. He's created this from the ground up, and he's done a fantastic job, so I will get out of your face and let him.
Thanks, Nelson.
And I want to thank Nelson. He does a great job. We rarely see him, and we rarely have problems with our computers, so wherever he's at, no one's going to complain.
Just leave him alone.
Keep up the good work.
Right, Nelson.
And now he's gone.
He's with us in spirit.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you all. As Nelson said, my name's Pat Fitz. I'm the GIS specialist for the city of Fort Morgan. But to start with, we'll just go over some basic stuff here. What is GIS? So it stands for Geographic Information Systems, or SCIS. Breaking that down, geography is the study of the Earth's surface and how humans interact with it. So a GIS is a method of data storage designed to organize, display, and analyze spatial data. So spatial data can be anything that has a location, so it could be this building, it could be this laptop, it could be a desk, a person, a vehicle, anything really. Some examples, it could be countries, states, counties, cities, blocks, et cetera. And it's important to note that it's more informative in combination, because it shows the relationships and how things function together. So coming up next, we have some examples of that. So these are all of the cities in Colorado, as well as the major interstates. There's also some rivers on there, which tend to follow the interstates. So, you know, you can see, kind of informative, you can see where populations tend to cluster, as well as the roads indicating how people move from city to city. Then if we add some population data and show the cities by their population density, it becomes even more informative. You can start to see the Denver metro area, as well as Fort Morgan and Brush on I-76, since we're the largest cities out this way. I created this using publicly available census data. Most of the data I use is publicly available and free, as long as you know how to find it and where to get it. So speaking of the Census Bureau, two of the projects I've been working on are the Boundary and Annexation Survey, which is an annual project, and then the Local Update of Census Addresses, which is for the decennial census happening in 2020. So the Boundary and Annexation Survey basically allows municipalities to update the census as to their boundary changes that happen annually, and they use it for all of their other surveys, that they know who's where, basically. So those three other surveys and programs are up there right now. It's the American Community Survey, the Population Estimates Program, and the big 10-year census. So for reference, in 2018, we added approximately 180 acres through annexation, and that's shown right there. So as of January 1, 2018, that's on the left, and then the pink indicates the annexations that we made last year. So as of January 1 of this year, you know, 180 additional acres, which is pretty substantial. That second program is the Local Update of Census Addresses, which basically, there's not a whole lot visually to show for it, because it's just us updating the census to, as to any new addresses that we have since the last time they did a survey. Reasons to participate, we get money from the census, depending on how many people we add or lose in the 10-year gap, so it's important that we update them to the new addresses we have. And that concludes the summer, and that's when they get back to me and tell me if they accepted the addresses I gave them or not. So for example, I added all of 322 Linda Street, which is Sol Naciente, and that's a substantial number of people right there. Another one is the Calvary College. They indicated they might have dorms at some point, so, you know, there could be people there that the census needs to count in order for them to be considered in our city. All right. Another one of the projects I've worked on is updating our zoning map. I tried to keep what I liked about the old one and then update some of the stuff that didn't work quite as well. So this is the old one, which I think was last updated in 2014 or something. It's kind of hard to read, it's a little cluttered, but it is color-coded well, which I liked, so I kept that. Some of the changes, I incorporated individual per parcel addresses, which you won't be able to see, but if you zoom in, they're all on there, so that you can see where you are. It's much easier to add annexations. We also incorporated some of the FEMA floodplain data, and that's what that looks like now. Another one, which was pretty interesting, was the subdivisions and annexations. So this is the 2014 map. It's also quite difficult to read, and it doesn't differentiate between a subdivision and an annexation, they're all just labeled the same. So I went through all of our records, and if we didn't have one, I would go in and manually add it using meets and bounds, stuff like that, surveyors' instructions. So that's an example up there of Barlow Right of Way that I had to add. And then the final result looks like... And then, the final result looks like that, uh, so each annexation is individually color-coded, uh, with an overlay indicating whether or not it's a subdivision, because they don't often line up perfectly. Aspects of one annexation might have been subdivided with another annexation, um, and that's just a larger view of that. The other big project is updating the utilities data, uh, off of AutoCAD, so that it's accessible on a website, and that they have better access to it. A large part of that has just been quality control and cleaning. So that example is some underground electrical lines up by Riverside Commons. You can see that they're all jagged, and, you know, that's not correct, like, it doesn't actually look like that on the ground, um, which if you're sending people out to do locates or something, is important. So basically, I just had to go through and manually straighten all of that out to make it look cleaner and more accurate. And then, some analysis that I've done recently, um, this is an example, I'm actually doing it with, um, drug crime data for the police department, uh, we just didn't want to put it out, like, super publicly. This is, um, all of our LED streetlights in the city, and the kernel density analysis basically generates a heat map to predict the likelihood of an LED streetlight being in one of those red areas. So, like, the obvious corollary for crime data is looking at, you know, where things tend to happen, and then using the heat map to help predict why they're happening there. And then, earlier this year, I worked with Steve Glamire to put together some info for our Strictly for Streets program. Basically, my goal for this was to be able to show annual progress reports and planned work, looking ahead into the future. So each one of these maps will show the work that was done in a given year, the past work, as well as the stuff that we were planning on doing, uh, in subsequent years. Uh, so for 2018, you can see the red and blue indicate work that got done that year, and then the dotted lines all indicate stuff that's getting done up to 2023. And as we move through into 2019, um, there's more work being done this year, as well as the previous work and the planned work. Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Awesome work.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, this has been a dream for many years for lots of departments, so thanks for following through and doing an exceptional job to help, yeah, a lot of people.
Definitely.
So, I had a question.
Sure.
This is the IT geek in me, that's my daytime job. So with the, where you were showing Riverview Commons, where you overlaid, um, does the Utilities Department have, are they actually overlaid like that with the, the aerial map?
Yeah, so like, on the website, it is overlaid, yeah, or it will be.
Because it, to me, I mean, I would think that's easier than, you know, working at...
Yeah, it, it's definitely a lot easier than have the current, like, AutoCAD format, which doesn't have any visual reference at all.
Very cool.
Awesome.
So are you converting all the AutoCAD to GIS?
Well, so it basically exports straight from AutoCAD, and I can pull it in. The data itself is usually a little messy, uh, just in terms of, like, the, the formatting in the tables, and then sometimes, like, those electrical lines, the actual visual formatting is incorrect as well.
With, with what Pat's done, we, we're also looking at, uh, and have, um, tablets that go out into the field with the people that are doing locates, or that are working on different projects, to help them understand what's out there, what's going on. This will make it a lot better, safer, and better for our utilities, as, uh, our guys are out working on projects or going to locates. And, uh, Pat's done a really good job in working with the police department and other departments to put together additional information for analysis, whether it's in the police department, or we've looked at other potential kernel, uh, analysis kinds of, uh, maps that we can do. The other thing that's been really good, uh, with economic development, is, um, that when we have a developer that's interested in a piece of property, we can immediately put together a nice-looking map and send it off to them in just a few minutes, as opposed to, we had to, it, it took a little bit of time in AutoCAD for us to get it all figured out and done, and very few people could do it within the city. And, uh, we, we have these tools now that Pat's putting together, uh, and it makes things a lot easier and better for us to present the city in an economic development perspective.
What do you see coming up? What's the next project you plan to be working on?
Uh, the utilities thing is still gonna be an ongoing one, just getting that up and running, and where we want it to be. Yeah, kind of just as people come up with projects, you know, like the police department stuff, I started working on about a month ago. We're already putting together some daily, or the plan is to put together some daily, um, crime updates for the police department. They have a visualization for that.
And we're hoping to use it also with economic development, for mapping available parcels and buildings and things for businesses, so that we can quickly provide that information as well, and have it accessible on a website. Pat does a great job.
Cool. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He wants to go back to his people, kind of like Nelson, right? I'm guessing you like being up there about as much as Nelson does, right?
Thank you, Pat. Next is Best and Brightest Management Intern, Daniella Cabrera.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I would like to thank Jeff Wolves for the opportunity he gave me a little over a year ago, um, when he hired me, and, um, Council for, for trusting him on that task, and to everyone who I work with. Working for the city, uh, means working for the people, and even though not everybody appreciates what employees do, um, I learned that I have to do my best every day I go to work. It was a very challenging year, as we all know. My mantra was administrative leave. However, I know, I knew during those months, um, that I did work with Jeff, that he was a great professional, doing everything he could to prepare the city for a great future. While Jeff, while Jeff was gone, Ty Hamer took his place briefly, briefly, as a mentor. And I'm very thankful, uh, because Ty took another responsibility. He taught me what he knew. During that time, I had the opportunity to work, to work really in-depth with the Community Services Department. It was a great experience, because it allowed me to work, um, with most of the departments that Ty manages. Now I need glasses. I would say that my first year as an intern was very educational. I got the opportunity to go to conferences like, um, Colorado City and Management Association, Colorado Municipal League, MEIN Conference, um, I worked on a presentation, um, for the NMPP about fiduciary duty and elected officials. I also went to the Colorado Municipal League Conference. A workshop from, um, that Ty took me to was GOC, um, and before applying for the grant. And that workshop gave me the skills to be able to improve the likelihood of, um, getting the grant. Going to these conferences and workshops, um, mean a lot, because, you know, for the development of, um, our city. It means learning new ways of dealing with issues in our community. As time passes, council members change, population change, a community, economy, sorry, yeah, economic, economic, sorry, opportunities also change, and these conferences help you organize for those changes. So I'm actually really glad that you get to go to CML, for example, and others that I don't know. As part of my duties, I'm required to go to directors' meeting, managers' meeting, and city council meetings. These have been very helpful, because I get to know how to handle a variety of issues with the goal of making the community better. For my first year, um, I spent most, or, yeah, sometimes working with different departments and learning about the city. I worked with the finance department in regards to business licensing and self-collecting sales tax. Closing the parks, the parks at night, um, was one of my first projects. It was very exciting, because people in our community were getting involved, um, and that's always good. I've spent most of my time working with, um, Community Services Department, like I said, organizing events for the city and the community. I actively participated in Parks in the Park, as well as National Night Out. And this year, um, I'm very excited that I have to, the opportunity to improve what I did last year. My ongoing projects, um, are the Fort Morgan Youth Commission, and since 2020, Pat has been really helpful, um, so I'm glad I get to work with him. I helped organize a public forum about a charter, charter change, um, and if you remember, we had translation services. I realized the importance of representing everybody, whether they speak the language or not, um, and the importance of informing our citizens. I have to say that John makes a, does a really good job doing it. That didn't make sense. This year, I hope I really get to participate more in those communication processes. Something that I learned is that every issue, no matter how small it is, it requires attention, because the smallest issue can impact someone's life very negatively. This is why I'm proud, I got to write, um, Representative Campboks on behalf of the city, um, to avoid the closure of our station, Amtrak, Amtrak station. Maybe I didn't do it, but I hope. Based of the needs, based on the needs of our community, I started developing my final project. I wish I could tell you a little bit more, um, but you'll find out in the future. But it has to do with language. Very often, um, the utility billing and planning zoning departments need my help translating, and I think the public really appreciates that the city has someone there to help them, um, and to help communicate their needs. So it makes me very happy that I've been part of what the city does to support different organizations, like, organizations like FM Cup in One Morgan County. These organizations do a really good job. It's been amazing working with them, and, as I said, last year was a very educational year, and 2019 is more like, um, a put-in-practice-while-you-learn kind of year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniella.
Any questions for Daniella?
What's your long-term plans?
I would like to stay, um, probably that doesn't depend on me, uh, so, we'll see. Thank you.
And I want to thank Daniella for having the courage to come up and do this. I, when you think about it, if you had to go to, uh, another country and speak their language and do as well as she did, I think it'd be hard for any of us to do, but she did a really good job tonight, and she is a great part of our team, gives us a different perspective on, on various things that we look at from a policy perspective. She's a hard worker, and we're really glad that she's been able to come and be a part of our team, and appreciate her giving a little presentation on what she's been doing. So, thanks.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing of an ordinance implementing referred Measure 2E of the 2018 special election in the city of Fort Morgan, re-designating the chief of police or equivalent titled position from a director reporting to the city manager to an appointed official reporting directly to the city council. This is a public hearing, please keep public comments to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit their comment to three minutes, unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event, in which event, additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations, as I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit of the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has the hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on February 22nd.
Next is presentation of the ordinance by me, I guess. So, we have supplied copies of the ordinance to the community. At our last council meeting, there has been a, uh, timeframe where this is the public hearing to go through, uh, review of it. So people that have reviewed it, um, if you have questions, now will be the time to bring them up, and I don't see that anything has changed in the, uh, what was put out and what has been submitted for this meeting, so... With that, is there any public comment that wishes to speak on this issue? Is there a sheet for signing in?
Good evening, councilpeople and Mr. Mayor. I'm probably gonna need more than three minutes. I represented 2E Committee, so I would ask for more than three minutes. If not, it's gonna be the way, I'm gonna have to approach it completely different. I'd like to, uh, start out, hopefully I don't get interrupted as I'm speaking here, because I, I have a process here, and I'm gonna go through that. When 2E, 2E was initiated almost a year ago today, and there was reasons for that, which I won't go into, but the, um, council wind up putting it on the ballot as an issue. If I would've put it on there and worked with the group, it would've been worded differently on the question that was put in there. I thought the question on the ballot was open-ended and ambiguous, and there was no implementation date, which most legislations have, usually. So, 2E was to have the chief of police completely report to the mayor, council, being independent of the city manager, that was the purpose, as I proceeded around the city. The question I have, and you don't have to answer it, I'm just throwing this out, who prepares the budget for the police department? Is it the chief? Is it the sergeants? Is it the commanders? Or is it everybody together? Because I think they should've been involved in the process. As this process moved forward, I was hoping the city management or the council would've reached out to the people that initiated 2E, which is made up of three former mayors and one former council member, but there's no attempt to contact anybody. They have a lot of knowledge there, probably more knowledge than, that we have up there right now, because you're dealing with generations there, that goes back lots of years, with the old charter and the new charter. Originally, I was mayor, when the charter was changed to this type of government, we thought we'd give it a try. It needs to be tweaked, that's what we're doing. We may have to tweak it some more. We may have to tweak it some more. All I'm asking is for one change tonight. If the change isn't done, then we'll look at tweaking the whole charter. There's several ways we can do about that. When the citizens aren't happy with what management or the city council is doing, there's a process that's known as initiative process. There are several types of governments that I learned about from attending CML conferences. There's about four or five. There is one type where the citizens show up at meetings and they run the meetings. When the citizens need to get the power back to the people, they use initiative process. That's what this country is founded upon.
Okay.
I would like to...
Let's get back to the 2E.
Yeah, we're doing that. I said, please don't interrupt. I want to make a point here, and I seem to get interrupted a lot when I talk. And I'm going to make, also, when I wrote a letter to the editor, I'm trying to make a point here, if you can bear with me, which you have bared with other people and other comments. I wrote a letter to the editor, it was responded to by the city manager, and in his letter, he said, "When the 2E ordinance is presented to the city council, I invite Jack Darnell and all residents to be part of the process." Let's make it an ordinance adopted by council for the people, and I couldn't agree more with that. What I'm asking, and I'll get to, I'll sum it up here. What I'm asking is to add to the charter that the chief of public safety or chief of police, whatever is designated, presents the budget to the council. Now, the city manager, I understand and I agree, all the budgets from all the appointed officials need to go to the city manager to have a total budget. That makes sense. But we want a complete independence of that position. I believe they can still work together well and be completely independent, but I believe it's important to do that. I was not asked to be part of the process, and I feel like the committee was left out at the beginning, so I wanted to take some time to explain some of the information I explained. And if I took too much time, I apologize.
You're fine.
That's it.
Is there any other public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, there's no one else who wishes to speak on this issue? I'd ask the clerk if any oral or written comments were received prior to this hearing.
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Now proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any discussion from any of the council members?
I have some questions, Your Honor.
Okay.
Under subsection B, it says in there the regulations, "All city employees will the manager have control over." I believe the police department is supposed to be separate of that, and just kind of wondering, the manager oversees the human resources manager who has input to the personnel policy. Does this limit any resource that the chief has if he disregards or disagrees with the city policy that the city manager has full control over?
Could you readdress which policy?
Sure.
I was not sure.
Okay. But under subsection B, it just basically says, "Establish and implement personnel rules and regulations for all city employees." Can you understand that one, Jeff? What is...
Uh huh. Okay. It's like what we do now with the other appointed officials, employees, they're subject to the same personnel rules as anybody else. I know that the police department has their own specific rules and policies that they enforce separately from everyone else, but the general rules apply to everybody across the board as it relates to, you know, benefits, pay, it's all pretty much the same in how we apply those rules, just general conduct, kinds of requirements that we have for all employees. And there's also obviously standards of procedure and general orders that the police department has separate from those that would be enforced by the police department completely separately, which the city manager would have no control or anything over. But to be uniform in how we apply the policy across the board, this is what we've done with the fire department and with the city attorney's office and would be consistent with all of the appointed officials.
Okay. Maybe we should say that in there or something to that, something of that nature, you know, instead of just saying "all."
But I think you might want to look at legal counsel.
Okay.
Sorry, Jeff, and, you know, look at why that's in there versus changing up and adding
Well, I don't see any downside to listing everything there, although the risk of doing that is that if you inadvertently omit something, then you presumably have excused it from his authority.
Okay.
So that's the downside of going in and listing everything.
Okay.
If you say "all," you've got "all."
Okay.
You know, and there's no ambiguity about it.
And am I correct that the reasoning for listing it as "all" is to protect the city from, I mean, all of our HR roles are put into place to protect the city, to make sure everybody is created or is treated consistently so that we don't end up with lawsuits over, you know, one department is treated one way, one department's treated another way, and it's not, having sat on the committee that worked through this, I think the intent behind that was so that we didn't, we weren't, there were extra things that the PD has to do in addition, but across the board, all employees, you know, as an equal opportunity employer, all employees are created, or not created.
Treated.
Treated, treated, not created, treated equally. And I think to what Jeff was saying, to Mr. Wilson was saying, if you stray too far from "all" and you start listing and you miss something, you open up the potential for, you know, for lawsuits and questions about, you know, the integrity of the charter, and when you get down too deep into the weeds, it tends to, you know, muddy the waters more than, while it appears on the surface that it clarifies.
Yep.
It muddies it potentially in the future.
Well, as long as it's covered, you know, and if you think it does, then I'm okay with that. I gotta, I kind of write these things as we go here, so, or as I went through the week. Under the 2E, are the police employees going to have a different evaluation process than the normal city with police-related policies, I mean, with police-related evaluations? Has that been thought up at all?
And that would follow, and this is some of the things that we're going to work through after the implementation, but generally, we apply the same standards and timeframes and everything for evaluations to all employees. That's under that general concept. But I know that the police department also has a separate way of evaluating employees already that we already acknowledge.
Okay.
For example, in the first two years of the hiring of a new police officer, they get an evaluation every six months. That's not something we do for any other department, but we do that as part of their training for FTO training, as well as making sure that they're getting the advancement in pay so that we can retain them when they're done being trained after two years.
Okay. And one final question here. Under the proposed 2E, who would the police officers appeal to remain compliant under the CACP certification requirement? For disciplinary actions, anything like that?
I would...
Because now we appeal it, we appeal it now to Jeff.
I don't see anything here that would change that.
Okay.
I think you'd want to call that out specifically if you wanted to change that.
Okay.
With full disclosure, I didn't write this ordinance.
Right.
I inherited this ordinance, so I'm sort of channeling here, doing the best I can with that.
So with this being our first process, if you run across things or refinements that need to be done to meet what the initial needs or request of the committee was, we can still do that before the final reading, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ron, were you part of the other, the old charter? Who did the police?
I was an employee at that time.
At that time. So did the police officers, some of them were left in the day, appealed to the city council then, or how did that work back in those days?
When it was originally, they had a, each council person was assigned to various departments.
Okay.
I was at wastewater. We had Sue Spencer was our council person, and she would, we would have our grievances or discuss them with her. So whoever was set over the police department at that time, that was who they would appeal, would appeal or go to.
Okay.
So, I know there's been some talk about a committee, some sort of group that would, they would have an appeal, like an appeals board, what we have for our building officials, appeal board that we have. So I think maybe something of that nature.
One of the things that you might want to keep into consideration, maybe help Mr. Wilson out here a little bit, is that under the charter, there's a very strict provision that says that all employees shall and are and shall remain, something to that effect, at-will employment. And so one of the things that you have to be careful of was that the intent to change the charter to eliminate at-will employment by instituting a separate and distinct appeals board process in that, in what was decided. That's not to say that you can't come up with a way to address the appeals process, because I definitely think that's something, if you want to do that, you can. And as far as the, and the chief would probably be better off to speak about CACP accreditation, but we've worked within that confines, within the confines of the current charter of being at-will, an at-will employer, to make sure that we're able to meet the requirements to be accredited, and I think that that can be, that can still be accomplished under what we're currently doing. And if that includes that the chief and the police department or the council decide that any of the appeals don't come to me, there's another way that I'm sure that it can be addressed so that we can still meet the CACP accreditation requirements.
Yeah, because right now, if somebody has an issue, they appeal it to you for a final decision.
Right.
So with you being removed, I guess, who would, who would take that position, you know?
Well, and one of the other things, I think, what you're talking about, and that's a good question, one of the things you're talking about is that they used to come to city council, and that used to be the way things work under the current, the way that it's drafted here, it's very clear that all of the employee issues related to whoever's under the police chief, whoever's under me, whoever's under the city attorney, whoever's under the fire chief, are to be managed by the directors or the appointed officials and not city council. And so what you also look at is, was the intent of the change of the charter by 2E to change that provision that now council has authority over employees? And I think that would be a legal, you know, call, is that, was that the intent of the language that you see in what was voted on to change council's involvement with employees? And so these are kind of fine lines that we have to look at when we adopt this language and what we're doing to make sure that we're complying with what was voted on by the people and what actually happens. I know a lot of the things that we've discussed, the chief and I, and also the commanders are, there's going to be a period after this is adopted where we have to look at what happens on the day-to-day level. What happens, for example, how do we sign POs? How do we approve employees? How do we manage this day-to-day stuff where I used to do something and now maybe the chief should be doing that? And that's something where we've sat down and there's going to be a lot of coordination and cooperation with these processes to make sure that we're complying with what the people intended, to make sure that the chief is separate and has his authority over his department.
Right. I think the real cookie cutter portion of what was intended on this was a complete separation of city manager oversight of the police department. That falls under the chief of police. He oversees his employees. You have no authority over his employees. He has no authority over yours. Your employee, employee is, I guess. So there is no oversight. You're the in-charge person, so is each, we have one throat to choke for each appointed official. And that's why I brought up about that. I never said anything about them bringing a grievance to council. That was why I said, you know, the appeals board as to what that is.
Right.
So, and that was just a thing that has been brought up. So I know that the initial intent of this was to have a complete separation of duties and authorities. You develop the budget, you present it, it comes together, and later on in this agenda, we will do a calendar for the budget. So, did you have something, Jeff?
Well, what I was going to add is that the only gloss I'd put on what Jeff said just a moment ago is that I think beyond being a legal interpretation, it's also a political interpretation, what the voters intended. And then whatever you want to do, conceptually, it can be drafted legally.
Well, upon your review, I mean, see that it would fit of what we're, that there is just a separation of the two authorities. Jeff doesn't have authority over the police department, the police department has no authority, I guess in essence they do at some points, but that there is just a definitive distinction of oversight between the two departments.
Something, if I might, if where we're going here is directing an amendment to be drafted or something like that, it'd be useful to know where in here you want that to occur. I noticed on page five of the proposed ordinance, this is in section five, new section three regarding the police department, a subsection E says that supervision and control of the employees, including selection and removal of employees, shall be exercised by the chief of police. Now, to me, that seems pretty broad and pretty definitive. If you want to do something more than that, like spell out something, then you say we do.
No, all I'm doing is specifying what the initial intent of this was, that this covers that portion, that there is separation of the two. If this meets it, great. If there's an amendment necessary for that. I don't see that you'd see anything in the private sector. That's like saying that somebody that was let go at a big company could appeal to the board of directors. I mean, that doesn't happen. Kevin. Pardon me? We've already established that part of this. They answer to the chief. Jeff's employees answer to him. City attorneys answers to them. Just giving Doug another example. I know. I mean, it's spelled out in, I see it in here. So my comment was that to make sure that this meets the separation of it. And I was addressing Doug's comment.
Thanks, Kevin.
And I guess I would, are we still in the comment period?
Sure.
I guess I would like to thank Mr. Darnell. I think your point, the points that you brought up, especially about the budget, are definitely comments that council members have heard. And to speak to your comments, I think the intent during the whole process with our committee was to make sure it is clear that the chief is creating a budget, the chief is presenting the budget to council. Ultimately, that budget has to fit Ultimately, that budget has to fit into the bigger umbrella of the city budget. And, you know, together, they have to work as a unified, you know, entity along with the city attorney, you know, and the chief of police. But I think, as you'll see as the meeting goes along, when we set our budget calendar, there are very specific times that, you know, the city attorney will present his budget, the city, you know, the chief of police will present his, you know, as will the fire chief. And I think, I think that can alleviate maybe some of the concern that, you know, there's not going to be anybody telling one of the appointed officials, you know, that, give me your budget and I'll present it. So I think, I think that was very important to all of the people that were on the committee, including the community members, as well as Ron and myself, is to make sure that that was what happened, because that was clearly part of the intent of having those as two separate entities. So I believe we are working very strongly towards that, so.
Does anybody else have any comments, questions? There are none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
Have a motion by Lisa Northrup and a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the public input. The appropriate action now would be a resolution to approve the ordinance on first reading. You could propose amendments at this time as well, if I'm not mistaken, in line with the conversation we just had.
Okay. Are there any proposals for amendments? I was just specifying clarification, so. If there is none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution approving first reading of ordinance number 1226, implementing referred measure 2E of the 2018 special election of the city of Fort Morgan, redesignating the chief of police or equivalent titled position from a director reporting to the city manager to an appointed official reporting directly to the city council.
Second?
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next is a presentation on procurement of an inserter machine for the utility billing department and the state bid process, Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is going to be a little easier, I think, hopefully. In your packet, you should have a purchase agreement and maintenance agreement for the purchase of Neo Post inserter machine for the utility billing department. And I want to quickly introduce Kendra Armby, who sends out about $7,000, $7,000 bills every month, with the help of Jamie Anguiano. Everyone gets the bills together, but they're the ones that get to go in that room with that machine and get those bills to insert the way they're supposed to, whether it's just the bill or whether it's the bill in one of the company flyers that we send in. So Kendra's the lead biller and the lead person in utility billing. She's done a really good job. The machine that we have now was purchased in 2009. The prior machine was purchased in 2000. So we went nine years the first time. We've gone 10 years this time with the machine. The price of the machine is $20,219. I had budgeted $20,000. There will be a savings in the first year because we won't have to pay maintenance anymore. And maintenance is up to $3,300 now. And we were able to get the maintenance down to $2,500. He started with $2,750, but Kendra said, it's a brand new machine. Why does it need maintenance? So we did end up with a deal that's pretty good. And the new machine has also got this wifi on it so that it's supposed to be able to transmit some of the problems to them so they don't have to come out. Because a lot of the problems when it breaks down, and it does break down several times a year, but if the new one were to do that, we'd be able to rely on the new technology so that they wouldn't have to come out. We wouldn't have to wait till we could get them, that sort of thing. You know, of course, when it breaks down is in the middle of 7,000 bills. So it's a little frustrating and worrisome when that happens. So we just want to, we just want to get the new, better machine and hopefully you guys think that's what we should do. And also the maintenance agreement needs to be signed as well, when we purchase the machine.
How much time would it, just ballpark figure, would it cost if we didn't have an inserter machine?
I don't know. You fold it into three and then you put it.
It costs us a lot of employees.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't be able to get people to still work here.
So with the, I'm assuming with the new inserter, it probably doesn't give us any additional functionality. I mean, one of the things that we tend as a council always say, why don't we just insert that into a utility room? You know, when we need to inform the community about things.
Oh, yeah.
Does this allow, because sometimes the newer machines allow more to be put in and folded. I mean, that's usually where we've gotten into trouble.
There wasn't any indication it would be any faster than what we do. I mean, we have, the machine isn't like some old, old thing, you know? It's just that it breaks down and now the parts aren't available anymore. So it gets a little bit dicey when you don't know for sure if they're going to be able to find some part laying around they can put into our machine. But as far as, I don't think, is it supposed to be faster, Kendra?
It's supposed to be.
Is it?
Usually it takes us a day and a half to do the bills. And this machine, we should have it done within four hours.
Wow.
Okay, for the public, she said that it could reduce it down to four hours. So, God, we're going to have like an extra person. No, don't start with that. No, but that, yeah, that's great to know, half a day instead of a day and a half. And it's two people, because one person has to be at one end taking them off. And now it's probably not going to have to do that, because the way that they stack up is differently. It's not like they are now where, catch them quick or you're in trouble. Yeah, I've been in there. I've actually helped with some. We also use it for our payroll advices that go out and for our, not just the original billings, but the late bills. There's about 1,400 late bills, or no, warnings, warning bills that go out. They're not really, they're just notices. But, yeah, any other, anybody else?
So on our resolution, do we, the resolution on here is just a resolution for procurement? Do we need to specify signing of the contract?
I don't know. The mayor signs contracts all the time. Probably isn't a problem.
You don't have to. You brought it up, I just didn't know if it was something you needed to say.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, it's just a part of the process with you. So it doesn't need to be specified. It's in the charter.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Kenny? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I have a resolution to approve the bid for the Neo Post inserter for $20,219 for the utility department.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You've got to wear party hats that first time you run it through.
Go forth and insert.
Go forth and insert.
Next is a presentation of possible action on bids for a horizontal directional boring machine for the gas department. Mr. Barron's.
Brent, I think you might even be able to run this machine.
I, I'm excited if they can get the bills out and the money in quicker. I mean, that's, makes things a lot easier, especially with my next three agenda items.
You can share more with the GIS people.
There we go. There we go. Good evening, and on that note, I would like to thank Pat for everything that he has been doing within the GIS department. It's been very refreshing to have somebody dedicated on that project. We're still spending a little bit of time getting the interface with the utility departments worked out this year, but we're hoping to have that all hammered out by this summer and everything. But it's nice being able to see this come to fruition with that, so I wanted to throw that out there. Yes, I'm speaking for Mr. Barron's and Mr. Segal on the next couple. I told them I didn't know how long the agenda was going to run tonight, so I would, since I was going to be here anyway, I'd make their presentations for them. So I gave them the night off on that note. So first, we have, the gas department has wanted to add a new piece of equipment into their fleet. They use, right now, when they get into situations where they're running small service lines and tight quarters, they use a pneumatic mole to run underneath objects and sidewalks and things that we can't just tear up with a trencher. And it's hard to direct that piece of equipment just because of our soil types and if it hits a rock or something. And so it's, it's got its usefulness, but it's also not very practical in some cases. And so the gas department really wanted to look at getting just a smaller boring device. I know a lot of you on the tours have seen our larger piece of boring equipment, but this is a smaller version of that. And so they went out to bid to see what they could find in that arena. And as you can see, we had four different companies supply bids. The lowest bid was not necessarily the one that they want to go with. There was a slight price difference. They did bring these in and demo them within the department. And there was a, definitely a difference in functionality, they felt, with the second lowest bid. And so that's why Tony's wanting to request that we go with that bid from Ditch Witch for their JT-10. And so tonight, we're requesting the Ditch Witch bid with their base bid amount and their options, and then some additional equipment that comes with it, the boring fluid and things like that, so they can kind of fill out everything they need to put this thing into operation. So Tony's requesting approval to accept the bid from Ditch Witch of the Rockies for the J-10 horizontal directional drill with bid options and miscellaneous items in the amount not to exceed $138,000, which is under what we had budgeted this year for it. So, any questions?
He just wants to see if council can say Ditch Witch would.
There you go. There you go. Yeah, yeah, that's how we decided.
So what are the additional?
The main ones, let's see, were the, we wanted to make sure, just because they do use it so much in the summertime, they threw in, they wanted the umbrella as an extra. They went ahead and wanted to get a six inch reamer. So if we did have a bigger line, they could use that. There was a wash kit, specifically the wand and everything that goes with that for washing that piece of equipment. The biggest part of the upgrade was the locator. They have a little bit fancier, more precise locator, and that was, that was a couple thousand dollars for that one, so.
Okay. So everybody knows what the options are.
Yeah, yep. The locator is important as you're directing that. And with everything that we've got buried underground right now, and everything we continue to bury underground, being able to run that borehead and know exactly where it's at as you're moving through the ground is of great importance.
Don't want to hit the fiber.
Exactly.
Okay. So any questions for Mr. Nation?
Nope.
See anyone, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Ditch Witch of the Rockies for a J-10 horizontal directional drill with bid options and miscellaneous items in the amount not to exceed $138,000.
Second? Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on bids for a water line isolation project for the water department.
Okay, I think this will be the third time we've now come in front of council with this type of project. Two times ago when we did it, it was an emergency situation when we had the line break over by the Justice Center, and we were forced to do some line stop work in an emergency situation to get that fixed. Last year, we went out to bid to do some line stop work ahead of the main replacement that we were doing as part of the Center Point project. At that time, we only had one bidder when we went out to bid. This year, we have a line stop with a valve insertion included with it that we wanted to do ahead of the main line work that we're doing in Sherman. And this is a situation where it's that same 14 inch line that goes over by the Justice Center. We don't have any in-house way of putting in a valve ourselves, and so we have to go out to bid. We did have three companies actually bid on it this time around. We were pleasantly surprised to see that we finally got some competition with our numbers. And so, but we just need to do one of these this year ahead of the main line projects. And so that's why we're here tonight, we're hoping to get approval so we can get those guys in there and have that valve inserted before the main line projects. And those bids will be coming in front of council at the next meeting. So tonight, we're looking at approving the low bid, so we're wanting council approval to accept the bid from Colorado Tap Masters in an amount not to exceed $26,000 to perform one 14 inch valve insertion. Any questions?
Did we use one of these companies for last year's project?
Yes, we did. That was the company we used. It was Tap Masters, yes.
Okay. And these are just for the 14 inch valves?
Yeah.
We have a smaller insertion.
Yeah, we can do six and eight inch lines ourselves. Just can't do the bigger sizes.
Any questions for Mr. Nation?
Nope.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I have a resolution to accept the bid from Colorado Tap Masters in an amount not to exceed $26,000 for our, the one 14 inch valve insertion.
Second? Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lunden. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on bids for sewer relining services.
Okay. This is now going from the water to the wastewater side of things. We started doing this a couple of years and have been very, very happy with the results that we're getting. This is a newer technology, or at least it's a more refined technology, for going in and just basically lining the inside of an existing sewer main with a fiberglass type of substance. And even though you lose some of that inside diameter, you're making the pipe so much smoother that you're still getting the same carrying velocities and volumes through the pipe. It's allowing us to get in and do some repair work in some areas that we don't want to have to go in with a backhoe and dig up a bunch of backyards, or in this year's projects, we're trying to keep from having to dig underneath buildings. And so Eric, this year, wanted to target three areas where we unfortunately, I think back in the day when they did this practice, they thought it was a good idea. And now, decades later, we're finding out that it was probably not so good of an idea. But they actually used cast iron pipe in parts of our collection system. And it's great on the outside. It doesn't break down when it's bedded in the dirt and everything, but with the sewer gases and the liquid flows in there, that pipe just continues to scale up and it just keeps getting smaller and smaller. And so we've got several, three of these areas that we've got cast iron pipe in that we can't even get our camera down anymore. Still taking flow, so we're not worried about backups, but it's, we've got to the point where we're kind of concerned that we need to get these taken care of. So this year, with this relining project, we also talked to these companies about the ability to go in and they can remove the scaling from the cast iron section and then go back in and line it with this material and take care of it. Hopefully, it won't be a problem into the future. And so, so we did go out to bid with this one. Unfortunately, there were two companies that were very interested in bidding on this. Only one company turned in a bid. The other company, we're just not sure why, but they just chose not to. And so Eric's looking for approval tonight to accept the bid from CNL Water Solutions in an amount not to exceed $150,000 to complete the 2019 wastewater collection system relining project. We did go a little bit, you know, home estate, a little under $18,000 over their bid amount, just so if we do have some issues with some of the areas that we've got a little bit of cushion there, we can work with them as we're moving forward. So that's, that's why there's a little bit more of a difference with what we're requesting than what their bid amount was. So be happy to answer any questions on that.
Have we worked with CNL before?
Yes, it's one of the, we've actually used two different companies, and this is one of them that we've used in the past and I've been happy with, so.
What happens if they break the pipe reaming it under the library? What happens if they break the pipe reaming it under the library?
That's the concern, and that'll be something that we have to address very gently and quickly, and yeah. So we will have on-call guys at the standby, so we're working on that.
Let's just not do that, right?
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Nation? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from CNL Water Solutions in an amount not to exceed $150,000 to complete the 2019 wastewater collection system relining project.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you once again.
Thanks, Brent. Next is presentation authorizing additional engineering services on Phase Two of Center Point Plaza Development. Mr. Glenn Meyer.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Hello.
What you have in your packet tonight is a change order request number three for Center Point Plaza subdivision. As you know, we budgeted to finish out the rest of the infrastructure in Center Point this year, so this will firm up the final design so that we can negotiate with our contractor to get that project complete. So I included the estimate from the engineer in your packet. It's just under $25,000. We're going to ask for 30, not to exceed 30,000. This will give us the ability to have a few minor contractor visions if we run into something we don't anticipate. I don't think that'll happen, but it just gives us a little flexibility. So the plan would be to finish up the design in the next month, and then we're going to sit down with the contractor that's currently working on the roads and piping out there and negotiate a price to just keep building roads. We're going to talk about a subdivision in a few minutes, and I think we may have a potential buyer for a lot that this will work nicely to connect right up to, to give access to a potential future development in Fort Morgan. So pretty excited to get this project continuing to move forward. So be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
We're excited about that, too.
So this is just a change order for engineering and permitting?
Yeah. Engineering, there's no surveying necessary. There's no more geotech work that's necessary. It's just simply design at this point, and if there's any, I don't think there'll be any permit work necessary at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glenn Meyer? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing additional engineering services for Phase Two of the Center Point Plaza development in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. See you in a bit.
Look forward to it. Next is presentation on approval of the 2020 budget calendar. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. As is required, under the rules of procedure, Rule 12, which manages the budget, I'm required to bring a budget calendar to the council for approval on how we will manage the budget preparation dates. This can be proposed in any way, fashion, or form, and council has complete authority to decide whether or not this makes sense for the council, or if you want something different. Years ago, the budget process started late in the fall, end of summer, early fall, and we were cramming stuff in up through Christmas. We've spread this out, and this year, we're proposing what we've done the last several years, where we do various presentations throughout the rest of the year. We have a retreat next week where we will discuss budget priorities for 2020 with city council and go over the various projects that we have planned this year and next year, and set the priorities as it relates to initiatives and other things. On April 16th, we'll present those goals and make sure that we understand the priorities by council. On May 14th is when we review and discuss revenues and where we believe the revenues need to be set based upon historic values. And then, we start into the various funds and departments. Self-insurance fund is one of the first things we do, just to give you a concept of where things are at there. Then we hit the various departments. Electric Fund, Gas Fund, Sanitation Fund, then July 16th, Water and Sewer Funds. August 6th, Capital Improvement Fund. August 20th, we have, let's see, the start of the General Fund. And with the General Fund, that's where we would have, like, the police department would come and present, the streets department comes and presents, all the various departments come and present in those two weeks. And so, that's where we get that opportunity. Now, one of the issues that was brought up tonight, and I really appreciate Jack being here and sharing his thoughts on the two-way thing, under the rules of procedure, we do have a specific process that if the city attorney, in this case, now the police chief or the city manager, the fire chief disagree with what's going in through the presented budget, they can voice an objection and make that objection made to the city council and say, "What I have, you know, is a little bit different." The hope is that we work together cooperatively, and we never have to have that kind of objection process. And we've done that very well in the past with the fire department and with the city attorney's department, where we sit down and we work through what each individual department needs and make sure that when we come to the council, everybody's on the same page with what needs to happen. But that's when we'd have that potential for an objection, where the police chief could come in and say, "Well, I agree with everything, you know, the city manager, I agree on everything in my budget except for this, and you need to be aware of it." But I don't think that that will happen. Then we have miscellaneous funds, schedule fees on September 17th, and then we retreat, if necessary, to review the budget and fees. In the past, we've canceled that, moved things up a little bit. This can be fluid, depending on what council wants to do. Usually, when we get to October, we're all pretty tired of looking at the budget, and we're ready to just pass it. But one of the things that this budget process provides that wasn't provided in the past is an opportunity for managers to come in, talk to council, for you to meet the managers, ask specific questions about their operations and what they're doing. And it gives, I think, the community a better sense of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. And I really appreciate council as a whole, because you do a lot of work in this process to make sure that we're meeting your expectations. And I don't think people realize the amount of work that the council puts into preparing the budget as well. And there isn't a single line item that gets approved that council hasn't looked at at some point in the next several months. So this is my proposed calendar. If there's something different you would like, or something additional you would like in there, we're happy to add it. But as is required under the council's rules of procedure, I'm meeting my requirements as the city manager.
Comments on the budget calendar? Pretty much falls in line with our council meeting, so.
Mm-hmm.
I would entertain a resolution to accept the budget calendar as presented.
So moved. Second.
It's a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, I make a, Your Honor, I make a resolution to approve the 2020 budget calendar.
Second.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider approval of a preliminary plat for the Phoebe subdivision. Once again, this is a public hearing. Please keep comment, public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit comments to time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens and which time, which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine necessary in the light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. Mr. Brennan, was a legal notice been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on February 22nd.
Thank you. Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Glenn Meyer.
All right. This is pretty exciting. We're before you tonight with a preliminary plat for a major subdivision of three parcels of ground. These are the parcels we recently annexed into the city, known as the Phoebig Farms annexation. And what you have before you is the preliminary plat. This is the second of a three-part process to subdivide ground in the city. The first step was to take a sketch plan proposal to the planning commission for their review and approval to move forward to preliminary plat. So you have the second step in the process, preliminary plat, before you tonight. That has been before the planning commission as well, for their review and approval and recommendation to approve tonight by this body. And they have done that. They did recommend your approval of this preliminary plat. Generally, this is, the subdivisions being created primarily because of road right-of-way dedications. We have East Beaver Avenue being dedicated from Beef Plant Road, which is the end of Center Point, over to Barlow Road, and then from Barlow Road over to the industrial park where East Beaver Avenue terminates currently. And then finally, there's a small lot subdivision on the third parcel that's been annexed. This is future land for expansion of the substation that's located at County Road R and Barlow Road. So Brent and I talked, and they, we thought it'd be a good time to just carve off a small parcel there should we need ground for expansion in the future. So those are the lots. We're talking six lots in this major subdivision. Certainly conceivable that in the future, these will be split up into smaller lots as we, the city acting as the developer would see other developments, look at these lots and maybe want smaller parcels. These parcels are roughly, the four, anyway, adjacent to Barlow Road are about 27 acres in size, so they're fairly large. We do have one potential developer looking at one of the parcels, the whole 27 acres. They need that for a potential business here in Fort Morgan. So I know Jeff's been working hard on that, and we're pretty excited to maybe move that forward here soon. So preliminary plat with the city acting as the developer, a lot of times with private developments, you would look for design drawings of roads and utilities and these types of things where the city's acting as the developer. You don't need that in this case. We're going to build the roads and the utilities that we'll eventually own, anyway. So I think it's safe to approve the preliminary plat as submitted. I included that in your packet. We've received one comment from the county commissioners. They want to just make sure that the dedication of County Road R that's shown on the plat does get dedicated to them and doesn't remain in the city. That's the intent. And their attorney has proposed some language that we'll include on the final plat when it gets recorded that will take care of that issue. But otherwise, we've received no comments on the plat. We didn't have any at the planning commission meeting either. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do they have questions for Steve?
Just the process. We'll bring this back to you with the final plat probably in a few weeks. So it's moving rather rapidly through our process.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, which is the city. Got anything else to say, Steve?
Ditto.
Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I would ask that the, if the city clerk, if you received any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this meeting?
No, Your Honor.
Is there any questions or comments or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Council action.
Mr. Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation. Your choices are by resolution to approve the preliminary plat or not.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve Case 19-001 for the preliminary plat for the Phoebig Farm annexation.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I love those quick ones. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance 1225, an ordinance to authorize a change of name for a permit conveying to Source Gas Wattenberg LLC as granted under Ordinance 6010 and amended by Ordinance 1086. Once again, this is a public hearing, and the same rules and expectations from the previous one apply at this one. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on February 22nd.
Presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Nation.
Has many changes since I was in front of you last time, just simply name change, and got to do this for their franchise agreement, so. Thank you.
It was your good side, Brent.
Yeah, the one with the folder in front of it.
He only had two sides.
Next is public comments. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk, if there are any oral or written comments were submitted prior to this?
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion. Is there any comments or discussion by council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right, this is the last one. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation by Mr. Nation. The suggested action is a resolution approving Ordinance 1225 on second and final reading.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving second and final reading of Ordinance Number 1225, an ordinance to authorize the change of name for the permit conveyed to Source Gas Wattenberg LLC as granted under Ordinance 1060 and amended by Ordinance Number 1086, and authorization to publish by Title Omaha.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is public comment or not of participation for items that were not on the agenda. Next, reports by officials and staff.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know a few people have some announcements and things to say tonight. One of the things I wanted to let council know is we're working really hard with our new change with employee wellness program. So if you have any questions about that, get in touch with Susan. But this month, we're doing a, I don't know if it's waterboarding, water challenge, it's something. I'll tell you, it's drink as much water as you can every day, and it's keeping people hydrated. It's a lot of discussion. I think we're...
That's not a revenue generating plan for this city as far as selling more water?
And flushing. Yeah, I don't know. I think, yeah. It's Brent's, it was Brent's suggestion. But we really appreciate the employees' engagement in our wellness program. Another announcement, too, is we continue to do a really good job with our safety program. And I want to thank our employees with their efforts to continue to look at ways to be safe. We were able to receive a rebate back for our general liability insurance, as well as our... as well as our workers' compensation insurance this year because of the safety of our employers. And we continue to hold ground as it relates to the safety that our employees, uh, have. And our focus on safety isn't the, the refund. Our focus on safety is, is taking care of our employees, and that's where we focus, uh, when we talk about why safety is so important, because when somebody gets hurt and can't come to work, it not only affects them because they're hurt, but it affects their family. It affects work, people having to pick up the slack. And we just want our employees to be safe, and I really appreciate them taking the challenge to protect themselves. And the byproduct of that is that we do get refund checks, and I want to make sure that, you know, the public understands the hard work that goes in for the employees, uh, to be safe and what they do in their job. And some of our jobs are pretty dangerous. And so, uh, really appreciate what they do. Um, with that, I know, uh, Brent had something, and I think, uh, the chief had something.
Very beginning.
I'll just piggyback on Jeff a little bit. Uh, the Electric Department, we were here a couple of years ago, and we received a safety award from the APPA, and we were notified a week ago that we've received that award once again for 2018. So, I was happy with the department in finding out that news. And luckily, this year's APPA conference that we can go and receive the award at is in Colorado Springs. So, me and Mr. Linton will be running down to Colorado Springs here in a couple of weeks and pick up our award and get a shake some APPA hands and stuff. So, it'll be a quick trip, but it'll be fun. So, I just wanted to pass that along.
You're in the public what APPA is-
American Public Power Association, so.
Great work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mayor, city council, a couple of updates from the Police Department. We've got, um, two sergeants in advanced leadership training this week, and, um, later this week, we're gonna be doing kind of an experiment. We've got another supervisor who is gonna be attending the same program as Commander Crone attended, but his is gonna be online. And we're gonna see how that works. Uh, but it's the same material. And we're very excited to report that we have stood up with the assistance of, uh, several people, Nelson and John Brennan and several in the Police Department, an online reporting system. So, citizens who want to make police reports now for minor crimes where there is no suspect can now do it online, uh, 24/7 a day, um, 365 days a year. Um, it's the first online reporting system in the area. And how it works is, uh, you would go online to the city website, click on the Police Department under Services, and there is an icon there that says, "Report a Crime." And it's fill in the boxes. It immediately is transmitted to our records unit. It's reviewed there to make sure it complies with our policy, and then is given a number. So, um, if there's a minor crime, as, as an example, say a bicycle stolen, we don't know who took it, suddenly it disappears. The, uh, person, uh, who is the victim can make an online report, uh, at their convenience. So, we're, we're pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Good. Jeff? Thanks. Anybody else?
No. Thank you. Uh, does council have any questions or issues that we can address? Okay.
Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the city is accepting proposals for an executive search firm for the position of city attorney until 4:00 PM on March 6th. Uh, sealed bids for Fort Morgan Pool House repairs until 3:00 PM on March 8th. 2019 Water and Sewer Underground Infrastructure projects until 3:00 PM on March 13th. Electric line rebuild materials until 3:00 PM on March 14th. Um, a hand-fed 18-inch drum-style chipper until 2:45 PM on March 18th, and a full-size crew cab pickup until 3:00 PM on March 18th. Under meetings, the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet next Monday, the 11th, at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. On the 12th, the Senior Center Advisory Board will meet at the Senior Center at 1:30 PM. Also, on the 12th, in the evening, at 5:30 PM, the City Council Budget Retreat will be held at the Fairfield Inn in Riverview Commons. On the 13th, the Airport Advisory Board will meet at the airport at noon. On the 14th, the Historic Preservation Board will meet at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. On the 18th, the Library Advisory Board will meet at the Museum Community Room at 4:30 PM, and the next City Council Regular Meeting will be on March 19th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Thank you. Nothing else coming before council? This meeting's adjourned.